Hi, everyone. Thank you. Welcome back. Hope you enjoyed your break. We are in the last session of the day, kind of like the inaugural session, if you will. We tried something different this year in an effort to have the presenters be able to get through all of their information in their session and not have the sessions run too over. And, you know, one of the one reoccurring theme that we hear from session or excuse me, from conference comments is that there's not enough time for questions. So we kind of brainstormed this year and we thought maybe we would try this type of format is limit questions throughout the presentation. And then we have this session where it's designed as a free for all. Last year, we did the planner is in with a panel and it went really well. We got good feedback from that. So we're kind of combining the two, the two ideas for sessions today. So I think what I'll do is I will go back to give me a second here as we, we all have to operate training now in the virtual world. So I will welcome our presenters for the panel today. So we have Steve Buckley, who presented this morning for the planning board basics. Steve is legal counsel services for the New Hampshire Municipal Association. He's a repeat offender to our conference. Tara Bamford is a planning consultant working mostly in the North Country and she is also a repeat offender. She's been helping us for many years as well as Steve with our conference and our sessions. So thank you very much, Tara, for coming. Tom Morgan is a newbie this year, maybe hasn't been for a while, but we welcome Tom with a session this year on EV stations and solar farms, which is, you know, very popular planning topic. So thank you, Tom, for joining us and for your time. And last but not least, we have senior planner Matt Monahan from the Central New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission. Matt has extensive experience in municipal planning, planning and zoning subdivision site plans, zoning amendments, and he is also a repeat offender. So welcome, Matt. We appreciate your time today, everyone. Take solace in the fact that it's a raining kind of yucky day out. Sometimes we seem to have conferences on beautiful spring days when everyone's wanting to get outside. So here we go. We're starting the planner is in. So let me get some of the questions from this morning that we've been tracking. And what I'll do maybe is just for format or so, I will start with some of the questions from this morning session with Steve and, you know, kind of go through there. We'll do a bit of a round robin or let Steve, you know, address some of his questions or, you know, the panel can raise your hand if you want to be the ones to, to answer the questions. So, and I also have put the speaker's contact information there in front of you and then their slides are going to be available on our website as well. But as always, our speakers are gracious and kind enough to devote their time for any additional questions that may come up after the conference. So let me get to the questions from this morning. So just give me a second here. Okay, so this morning from Steve's session, we had a question from John Wengler that says, can a planning board member assist abutters the same way that they assist applicants? If they can help abutters, can a planning board member actively reach out to an abutter before the public hearing? So I'll put that to Steve. That was from your session this morning. If you want to take that one, Steve.
Probably not a good idea because the purpose of the Supreme Court's decision in Richmond versus Concord is to ensure that to clarify, to reinforce that there's a constitutional obligation to assist citizens with understanding of participating in the land use process. Now, yes, abutters are part of the land use process. I think when you're dealing with an abutter as opposed to an applicant, an applicant has many more technical issues they have to address and may need much more direct assistance in trying to make sure that they do things correctly to get their ultimate objective, get a plan approval. I'm just not really wild about the idea of going out of the way to assist abutters. I mean, I suppose to that extent, the abutters have to be told their right to participate, that they can participate. But I'm not sure I would go much more beyond, you know, ensuring they know what they are able to do in terms of participation, whether it's attending a site visit or attending a public hearing. So I would be cautious giving aid and comfort to abutters in a very aggressive fashion.
Okay, thank you. Very good. Just for a clarification, we may have answered it this morning, but it's a quick one. And what if, what if a relative works for the party in the case? I guess that kind of goes along the lines with what I would say is like, when in doubt, don't.
Well, right. So, um, you know, I think as I tried to explain, if the relative is not a New Hampshire resident and works for Walmart in Florida and is a store manager and has nothing to do with the business that Walmart might be in, in New Hampshire in front of your planning board, trying to cite a new Walmart in your community. Clearly, there's such an attenuated relationship between that, that relative and their employment by Walmart and what's going on in front of your land use board. On the other hand, you know, if the relative works and has direct contact with the processes that the applicant is undertaking to get permission to do some land use in your community and you know that your brother-in-law, cousin is directly involved, then the prudence would dictate better to recuse and not create a question or that there is a conflict of interest.
Okay, great. Thank you. Next question from this morning. Would being an outspoken proponent, say water conservation or safe water, be considered conflicted for a particular application? Or would that be considered within the scope of our oath to protect the safety of the public?
Well, I would address the issue slightly differently. What we recognize in New Hampshire, there's two ways in which you have activity as a member of a board. You are, when you're a member of a land use board, acting in a quasi judicial capacity, you have certain duties related to ensuring fairness to all concerned and not prejudging applications. On the other hand, there are certain things that land use boards do in their legislative capacity. So when you have a legislative point of view, you're allowed to exercise that point of view and state your, your suggestions or preferences for, for instance, what would be appropriate amendments to your subdivision regulations, your site plan regulations or your zoning ordinance. So if I'm a member, let's say I'm a member of the Sierra Club and I'm also a member of the planning board, I have every right to express strong opinions about how land use amendments that I would be considering as a member of the planning board will have an impact on the environment. And that's not a conflict of interest because in that instance, you're acting in your legislative capacity. You're not adjudicating the rights and benefits available to competing parties, applicant, abutters and others participating in a case. So when you act in a legislative capacity, the same high standards of avoiding appearance of impropriety, conflicts of interest, they simply don't apply. And so if I am on the planning board and I'm on the Sierra Club, that's okay. Or if I'm on the Sierra, I'm on the, uh, the planning board and I'm a member of an ATV club that likes to go rip roaring through your community on trails, that's okay too. But when you get to the business of making judgments and decisions and latest applications, that's where you've got to show, you can't be partial. You've got to be much more attending to your duty to act in a fair and reasonable manner as a quasi judicial officer.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good answer. Can we ask about impact fees and growth management as it applies to the CIP? I guess we could throw that out there possibly for the panel or for, for anyone to jump at the chance to answer that one.
Well, I mean, so you don't, you, uh, impact fees would be a highly relevant issue with regards to capital improvement plan. Not so much growth management, although I suppose you could argue growth management is based upon the fact that we have a certain amount of infrastructure that we can't expand as fast as we should in order to accommodate growth. I mean, that's kind of how you use growth management, but I think it's a much more common topic in, in capital improvement planning, knowing what is the stream of income that might be available to pay for infrastructure driven by growth in your community.
Okay. Does preliminary review mean conceptual or quote non-binding design review? Do either of those vest a project?
Conceptual consultation is non-binding on both parties, whether it's the planning board or the applicant. So there's no vesting that takes place there. There's also a separate way in which preliminary approval might be have bearing on some level of, of agreement that the applicant has met the requirements of the regulations and is moving towards a final approval. The preliminary is, is, is heading towards final with some of the items that are in your checklist deemed satisfied. So now that you can narrow down the topic of things you'll do, you'll deal with at final approval. So I guess I, in short, you know, when, when you're talking about conceptual consultation, there's really no vesting that takes place there. Vesting only occurs on plan acceptance. You're vested from subsequent changes in the zoning regulations. And then once the plan is approved and you complete the necessary work stipulated by the planning board of starting the work on the project within 24 months, you get five years where you're protected from subsequent regulatory changes. So that's really where vesting comes to play. And even a preliminary approval, what, you know, typically this, we used to do our planning board. At every meeting, we would try to give some kind of, at some point during the process, give a preliminary approval. So if there's 10 outstanding items for an applicant to get the final approval, any number of them could be road design, drainage, whatever they are, we try to, what we used to do is try to say, okay, well, let's get, let's give, let's give the applicant a preliminary approval and say, we've dealt with these five of the remaining 10 items. And then at the final hearing, we address the final five items and, but that preliminary approval doesn't give you vesting entitlement, although if you suddenly change your mind, you say, we're just going to say no, even though we gave you a preliminary approval, you better have a really good reason. And to that degree, it might be bad faith, not vesting so much. If you led the applicant down the primrose path and they got, you know, most of their items addressed and approved a preliminary, but then you went ahead and denied it at final approval, it might look like a little bad faithy.
Yeah, right. Okay. Tara, you wanted to write a comment?
Yeah, I, I had a follow-up question for Steve when he, when he talked about preliminary approval this morning because when I update regulations for towns, I, I take out everything about preliminary approval because design review was made optional and non-binding. So I'm curious how you see preliminary approval fitting in the context of the statute?
I think preliminary approval is simply a way station that the planning board can have in its regulations saying, as we go through the process of considering your application, at set certain points along the way, we can give you a preliminary approval. That is, we're halfway through the review process. We're prepared to give you approval on your road design. Maybe the drainage is okay. Maybe the landscaping design is okay. Maybe the lighting plan can be approved. I mean, getting out of the way, the stuff that you don't have to revisit at final approval. So that's what I mean by preliminary approval. It's designed to create and, and for, for project developers, they need a preliminary approval. If they're borrowing money to move through the process, they need to be able to show their lender that they are moving, they're, they are moving towards final approval. So if you wait till the last meeting to give final approval and dress everything there, that may not be helpful to an applicant. But if you give them some preliminary approval halfway through, it's much easier for them, especially with their lenders. So that's what I mean by preliminary approval. And I, I think it's a good process and it helps you avoid having a very long last meeting. You've got to deal with everything as opposed to, we've already dealt with the, the five issues that we thought were important previously. Now we have five left. That's what I mean by preliminary approval.
Okay. Thank you. How do we know if our community has its fair share as we do not have infrastructure to support large multi-residential projects according to our engineers?
Well, I don't know what your engineers are looking at. But, you know, I, I think in order to determine your fair share of workforce housing, you have to look at, there's a number of factors. In fact, Matt Monahan and I worked on a fair share analysis for the town of Hooksett on the first challenge to a fair, to the workforce housing statute. And what, what Matt did for me as an expert witness and what the, the billing inspector did was first determine what is the income, the, the levels of income for different people living in, in his, in the region. The region was Hooksett plus the towns that bordered Hooksett and then the towns that bordered those towns. And then you try to determine what are the, based on census data, what are the various income levels of people living in that region? And from that you're able to determine, okay, if we have a certain number of people below poverty level or at above poverty level by certain amounts, by certain percentages, you've got to make sure you have housing which is affordable to all income levels. And, and it's, it's a, it's a function of looking at both all of the income levels in your area plus those, the, the communities that have bordered your area. And then from that develop, you know, an analysis, you know, that within the region, there is a certain need for how many units of affordable housing. And your town is going to have to have its fair share of that affordable housing. So I don't know what your engineer is looking at saying, you don't have the infrastructure. But in terms of a four, allowing affordable housing, whether it's single family duplex, quadruplex, whatever it is, I think unless you're talking about having to have onsite sewer and water, I mean, that is sewer and water utilities. It's just a matter of having sufficient land area to support onsite septic and, and wells. And that just comes down to analysis of soils.
I think that one of the comments that this, this person is asking the question about Steve is that they're looking at water capacity, water drawdown and storage capacities. So apparently there's, there's not water. So that's, that's kind of plays into the formula, I guess.
Well, it could. I mean, I, I, there was a couple of times where, when our, on our planning board, when I was on the planning board in Bo, we had to make an analysis of was, there was a project in front of us and we had to determine whether or not there was going to be sufficient potable water for a particular project. In part, that had to do with the fact that where the project was going to be located was near the old town landfill that had been closed. So we wanted to be sure if the developer puts their well within a certain distance of the old landfill, once they start pumping water for the community water system they wanted to build, is that going to hydrostatically pull water, the bad water out of the landfill and put it into the, the well and create a hazard for those who would live there? So there may be a need to do, you know, a detailed analysis. Is a particular location or particular lot have sufficient, you know, groundwater resources to support the certain number of dwelling units that are proposed? And if your engineer has determined that, okay, well, it may be that particular location in your community will work, but there probably would be other locations. So I can't imagine the entire town is without adequate water resources. If that were true, I think that would be a true emergency that would have to be addressed.
And Tara, you had a question or you wanted to add, you know, also?
Yeah, this is something Matt can probably speak to more, but the, you know, the statute requires the regional planning commissions to do a housing needs analysis for all of their communities. And it was recently done for New Hampshire and within those, for every town, there are listed a couple of income categories for owners and renters. So, so that's a really good starting point.
Yeah, I was going to add that as well, just to jump into, the person asking the questions is from Raymond. So they are in the Rockingham Planning Commission. So Mr. McLeod, if you have not reached out to your regional planning commission for assistance, I strongly recommend that you do because of, we're talking about the regional housing needs assessment has been completed. Check their websites, keep checking in with them. But a lot of your planning questions can also be addressed and asked through the regional planning commission. I'm not sure, Matt, you have anything else to kind of kick in with that as well?
Yeah, just kind of building off both what Steve and Tara were saying, you know, first off, you know, the region, at this stage of the game, most planning commissions, you know, the county can tend to be a good region to define things, right? As Steve said, you got to pull census data and things like that, right? So region and then income. But the other thing to think about with the, the regional, with the fair share analysis, it's essentially an estimate, right? You're not, you're not going to be expected to actually go out and build it, right? The town doesn't have to physically build it. It's, it's essentially an estimate. But the other piece of this too, when it comes to workforce housing is to look at your zoning and the statute says that each municipality shall have a reasonable and realistic opportunity for the development of workforce housing. And that includes rental and the various types of housing. And one of the things too, that we discovered when Steve and I were, were dealing with that case is I remember looking at the zoning and thinking, you know, they actually may have a zoning ordinance that meets that, right? Reasonable and realistic opportunity. So what does that mean? It, it can mean, you know, a variety of different lot sizes and lot densities. Smaller lot sizes can help there. And that's where Steve was saying, you know, you get into the soils and some of that. But, but not every lot is going to be the same when it comes to soils. So that is a factor, but you know, a variety of lot sizes, allowing different types of housing in different parts of town. So for example, you know, multifamily, but also accessory dwelling units. That's another way to, to meet workforce housing needs. And also, you know, manufactured housing. So I think, yes, the, the fair share is something to, to consider. But essentially it's just a planning tool. It's a guideline, right? But the big thing is look at your zoning because that can help you get a better understanding if you're providing a reasonable and realistic opportunity. Because at the end of the day, that fair share number is going to change due to things like, you know, real estate bubbles, you know, different factors in the economy. So that number goes up, it goes down, it changes. It's not a static, permanent thing. It can change year to year, but also, you know, within a given year, it can change if, if some of those different development pressures change. So I would just, to summarize, you know, consider your zoning as well. Think of it as an estimate and understand that it's tied to the region, which can be the county. I know for central, a county is kind of our threshold. Most of our towns are in Merrimack County, so that is kind of convenient. And then also income and things driven by census data.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. So let me move on here to the next question. Okay. Okay. At what point in subdivision and/or site plan review are impact fees estimated and then finalized? Are they part of the conditions annexed to approval or how are impact fees determined? Who wants to take a stab at that one?
Well, impact is supposed to be assessed at the time that the planning board grants final approval. So typically you would add the impact fee as a condition of approval that each lot in this subdivision that has a home built on it, it's going to have to pay at the time of building permit, a certain impact fee, whether it's for schools or for other traffic related, you know, impacts. But the, the fees themselves are developed typically with the assistance of a consultant, a planning consultant, who would then have the planning board adopt a proposed fee schedule that is designed to collect fees allowed under the ordinance for the identified piece of infrastructure. The most common impact fees that I've seen is for schools, but you can have them for roads. And also I've seen towns have them for public safety infrastructure, including fire trucks and other things. So it's again, the, the fee is, is assessed. It's not collected. Typically you would not collect the fee until the, the applicant's actual lot is going to be built upon and you would collect typically most, in most instances, the fee is collected when the person asks for the certificate of occupancy. But it's assessed as part of a condition of approval and it's, and it should be recorded with the recorded plan so that, you know, when someone looks at the recorded plan, they know if I buy a lot in the subdivision and have my bill to build it, I'm going to have to pay the assessed impact fees, which are in the ideal world listed or available and knowable at the time the plan is approved.
Right. Thank you. Okay. My understanding is any application for which abutters are noticed, it says including non-binding, but abutters aren't noticed for non-binding. So I don't know what that means. Vest an application against future impact fees and ordinances. Is any application for which butters are noticed, are noticed, including non-binding, vest an application against future impact fees and ordinances?
Okay. Well, when dealing with impact fees, there's actually a provision of the, of the vesting statute, 67439, that says, once your plan is approved and you've started work within 24 months and you substantially complete the project within five years, you're absolutely vested from subsequent changes in zoning ordinances, except increased or adopted impact fees. So that's an exception to the vesting statute. I think that answers the question.
Okay. We talked a little bit about this, but maybe Jane, if she's still on the, on, in the session can, can clarify for us. Her question is, please explain how each town or city determines what proportion of affordable housing for the county is required? We did just kind of talk about that, but I'm going to move on to our next question. If Jane is still online, if she could just kind of say in the chat whether she'd like more information on that question, because we did just talk about that. So, so thank you, Jane. Okay, next question. We have CIP and we want impact fees and growth management. Is there a guide for boards to get from point A to point B on these issues?
Hey Steve, I just, a first thought on that is, and it kind of ties to the impact fees and the growth management, is the need and the ability to demonstrate development pressures that are, I don't know, you know, more, I guess more than, than what your neighbors are seeing, your neighboring communities. And I think, you know, that, that's kind of step one with both of those. You've got to be able to show that, hey, you know, we're getting a little more demand here. So we've got to phase the, the building permits kind of via the growth management ordinance and then the impact fees. Because we're experiencing different pressures on, on these various pieces of infrastructure. The CIP is just a good planning tool. And to my understanding, Steve, you can have all three, right?
Well, yes, but I think in, in both the impact fees situation and growth management, it's all based upon around the concept that you have a certain amount of municipal infrastructure that may or may not be at capacity. But the easiest one to look at in terms of understanding how you would decide whether it's appropriate to have impact fees or for growth management is schools. That's one of the larger parts of any municipal budget, including schools. So if your school is bursting at the seams and you have a bunch of students are in trailers and you need to build in addition to the elementary school or the middle school, you might have sufficient conditions that would suggest you have a deficiency in this critical infrastructure. And we've got, you know, three or four very large 15 to 20 lot subdivisions already pending in front of the planning board. That's going to add more pressure, more people coming to our schools. We need to take a breather for a period of time while we can catch up with building that additional school space. That's, that's the concept. So you really have to have those preconditions. If you don't have those preconditions, it's going to be very hard to justify growth management. Now, there are other It's going to be very hard to justify growth management. Um, now there are other elements of your infrastructure which could be looked at. Your road systems. Okay. Yes, that's an important concept, but may also include, you know, um, do you have adequate staffing and equipment in your fire department? There are planning tools you can look to decide how many firefighters you should have and how much, how many pieces of fire equipment you have based upon your base population. And if that population is expanding rapidly, you may have an argument, you need more both staff and, um, uh, equipment. But one thing to keep in mind, both regards to impact fees and, um, growth management, you can't use either to make up for existing deficiencies you already have. That the impact fees and growth management are designed to help you to address future growth, not the fact that you've allowed your infrastructure to fall behind. You're not taking care of it. You're not, uh, keeping up with the natural growth patterns in your community. So, um, if you're going to pursue growth management, which I think is especially a tough call these days in the school side of things, which is where the big numbers are, um, because there's a shrinking of school population, um, you're going to have to have very strong planning evidence and you'll probably have to have a planning consultant to address these issues for you. Uh, with regards to impact fees, that's, that's, uh, that's future looking, you know, as we expand. And so it should be looking at as we expand, uh, and need to, um, i- i- and by the impact fees are not to pay for taking care of existing deficiencies in your road network, in your school network, or in your fire and safety. You have existing deficiencies. You can't use impact fees for that. You're using impact fees to accommodate the need for growth in that infrastructure as development puts pressure on the need for those services. That's the really the key point you have to keep in mind.
Yeah. And I think that Steve, you know, that there's, it's a good distinction to make is that impact fees are for the future. And that needs to, you know, in, in the experience that I have with them, like you said, is based on some kind of community services study that says if the town of, you know, Greenfield is growing at this rate, you know, this, you can't just be a planning board meeting, holding a public hearing and saying, boom, we're going to have a growth management or boom, we want, you know, you know, growth or moratorium. Um, there has to be some type of, you know, substantiating evidence or research that the community has, has performed and completed that's saying, yes, based on this current growth pattern, our current impacts, you know, our libraries are going to be able to handle it. Our recreation fields aren't going to be able to handle it. It's exactly what Steve is saying. It's not based on, you know, we only have, you know, a library that can hold 500 books, but we've done so much um, growth in the past 10 years. We need a library now that can hold a thousand books. It's for more of the planning of the future. That's why it, there is a distinction that needs to be made with that. There's a few questions. I don't know if the people are coming from the same town, but there's, there's these few questions have been lumped in here about the difference between, you know, what are the specific duties of the planning board for growth management and a growth moratorium? And growth management and growth moratorium are getting, you know, kind of thrown around. So, um, you know, hopefully, uh, you know, that a question again was from Jane. So if, you know, we, we've kind of have talked about, um, growth managements and growth moratoriums. So, you know, hopefully those have been answered your questions. Um, and if they, if not, just throw us a, uh, throw us a line in the chat and we'll, we'll, we'll move on. We'll move on from there because we've spent some time on that. So.
Stephanie, can I just add something to a question? Um, so not, not to bring us backwards, but the question about vesting and noticing and on binding application.
Yeah.
I, I answered part of it this morning in the chat.
Yes ma'am.
I'm concerned we might've only answered part of it just now as well because, um, the, the hundred and twenty day kind of freeze on zoning amendments applying to building permits does also affect, um, something that's come in for design review as long as an application comes in within 12 months. So that, that is the exception where something can be vested that's not final.
Gotcha. Great. Okay. Thanks for clarifying that.
That's in six seventy-six, quote, and twelve, section six.
Great. Um, how does the planning board deal with road town class five weight limits when addressing projects that add hundreds of overweight vehicle trips a day?
Too, too simple to just say, just say no.
Yeah, I, I know. I, I, I feel like some of these questions, I mean, I feel like some of the planning boards really need to, uh, need to not be afraid and, and hopefully some of this training can empower you to not feel bullied uh, by applicants that, you know, run around and threaten lawsuits and do this and do that. Um, you know, you have your regulations, you have your checklists, you have your policy, you have your rules of procedure, you have your zoning ordinances, you have, uh, safety valves that we like to call them, right, Steve? Your variances and your waiver requests. There, there's a method to your madness. Um, so, uh, you know, i- if, if it doesn't fit and the applicant wants to turn off lane or, or the applicant wants that, you know, the applicant needs to make that fit, not the town, uh, bending over and changing their regulations because one applicant, you know, can't fit. This is, I hope you kind of understand what we're, we're saying there and, and my other, you know, expert panelists, please chime in.
Well, one of the things I would say, uh, go ahead, go ahead Tara.
I mean, there's some line between, um, denying it. Right? And then they can offer to upgrade it and require an off-site impact, um, development exactions to upgrade a road. And, and at some level in a broader level, it's going to be scattered and premature.
Right.
The other thing I just would, I encourage planning boards to think about using is the Department of Transportation. New Hampshire Department of Transportation has published, it's available on their website, geometric design standards for rural roads. And it's an extremely helpful thing to use. When you have an application like this where someone is proposing to put, let's say, 10 new homes on an existing, and it's a class five road, but maybe it's in very poor condition. The geometric design standards will tell you, based upon the number of trips on a road, how much, uh, degree of, of construction is necessary. So a road that has zero to fifty trip ends per day, that's one trip in and one trip out, um, may be sufficient if it's just a gravel road. But as you increase the number of trips in that road, the geometric design standards would then require more subbase, maybe a first layer by tumulus concrete and then more by tumulus concrete on top of that. And that will help you analyze if this particular project is going to add so many more trips to a road that is, um, going to become substandard due to the amount of traffic. It's exactly what Tara said. You can tell the developer there's going to be a necessity to do an offset improvement for that road. The trick to it is the road may already be substandard. And there may be, uh, an obligation of the town to contribute towards that repair. So the land vest cases tell us that in those instances, if the town is scheduled to repair that road in the year 2025, you would tell the developer, well, we'll be prepared to pay our share of improving that road in 2025. Or you could pay our share now if you want your subdivision approval in 2023. That's kind of how you would, you would go through the process of deciding, but I would encourage you to look at the geometric design standards that would give you a good understanding of how to conclude a road is going to become substandard due to excess or the, the amount of additional traffic added to an existing class five road.
Yeah. Matt, did you have anything to, or Tom to jump in on that?
Yeah. I ju- I just want to add a couple of quick things. So, um, first, um, the, uh, NHMA, so I want to give Steve a plug here on the Hard Road to Travel. Um, that is a book that, uh, NHMA has put together that is very useful. It breaks down so many of the different things that pop up with regards to roads in general. Um, I use it a lot. Um, and I highly recommend, you know, get a copy. They're digital copies now. Um, it's a very great tool. And the second thing is for boards in general on, on any of these issues, um, ask for help if you need to, right? You can start with your planning commission. You can start with your, you know, if you don't have planning staff, but also your town engineer is a great resource for, for a lot of these road issues, right? Um, you don't have to be a expert on everything. Just know where to chase down the questions and, and start with your immediate, um, staff, whether it's in-town hall, city hall, or if you need to, go to the planning commission and, um, go from there.
Absolutely. Great reminder. Thanks, Matt.
And what, what I do too, what is what Steve was recommending, I incorporate our, the DOT construction specifications right into the road standards by reference.
Yeah, that's, that's great. And then keep them as amended as, you know, and someday when DOT amends there. So good point.
Always.
Under what RSA or lawsuit does the town have the authority over a pre-existing driveway?
It's two thirty-six thirteen.
Okay. Perfect.
Right in the statute.
For a voluntary merger, are butters notified? Uh, no, they are not for a voluntary lot merger. That's basically an administrative thing for the planning board. Uh, there's some administrative review that should be done by staff, just precursory to make sure that, um, anything that the board is going to, you know, allow to be merged doesn't create a non-conformity. Um, the, the, the banks have to be noticed. I think that Steve spoke about that this morning. Um, but a, a voluntary lot merger is an administrative issue for a planning board. It should be an agenda item, um, but there's no notice to the public. Can a subdivision include a lot that is divided by a public road?
I think yes. Um, I know there are, uh, some instances where a road creates a subdivision and some instances where it does not. So I would say on that, um, probably gonna no, take it case by case. And, and again, hard road to travel is helpful in that regard to, to try and figure out if a particular situation is, um, you know, which way it goes on that one.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, I think one of the next questions here, we, we did talk about, um, off-site exactions and, and the RSA. So, uh, Mr. McLeod, if we did, um, answer that question you had, how do you collect for off-site and repeat the RSA? I think that we did address that. So let us know. Next question. Does a butter notification with DR, I think that's supposed to be development of regional impact maybe, uh, vest in application? I don't know what DR is. Does a butter notification with DR vest in application? I'm not sure. Uh, who makes the decision? Staff or the planning board? Applicants seem to think it's staff. Uh, Mr. McLeod, I'm not, you, not sure what your questions were about because they're, um, we're going to move on. So if you're still online and you wanted to put something in the chat to clarify.
Yeah, I.
Oh, DRI, okay. So a butter notification with a DRI vest in application. I'm not, it's already been accepted as complete. Doing a DRI just kind of stops the clock and brings in, um, the regional planning commissions and brings in, um, any neighboring municipalities that, that have been selected as part of the DRI, you know, notification process. I don't know where all this vesting of things is, is coming from, but, um, it, it, once the application has been noticed as complete and determined of, um, the DRI, then the clock does stop, um, to allow for that additional notification. So it's just, it's just a status quo, hit the pause button, notice everyone. The regional planning commissions are noticed to have a chance to comment and then reconvene. And, and so I, I think that, Steve, you have anything to add on that or Matt for DRIs? Because I think that's what he's, um, it's the planning board who makes the decision for the DRI, not staff.
I actually can see how the question could come up because the statute, um, requires you to determine whether it's a DRI. Right? So it's, it's possible that you've noticed it as a DRI, but it's not complete yet.
Right. I mean, the staff could be the one to say to the planning board, hey, we have this, you know, application that, you know, may, may fit the criteria and, you know, and give the planning board a heads up that way. Um, but I mean, I think the art, the RSA says that, you know, the land use board, and I had this issue is, is a question that, um, whatever the RSA defines as a land use board and the building inspector can be defined as a land use board, correct Steve? So you have, you know,
Right.
Uh, uh, you know, at, at some instances, um, a building inspector being the one to make, you know, the declaration of, of a development of regional impact. But the RSA is, is, um, is, I'm pretty sure it says the land use board. So that would remove staff from making a DRI determination officially. I mean, as a planner, I would, if I saw something that came through and my staff report to the planning board said this has the potential to be a development of regional impact, let the board know, they discuss it. That's not me making that determination. That's not staff making the determination. It has to come from the board in a motion. Minutes are included and there's a, you know, there's a method to the madness to do that. So it shouldn't be staff unless it's the building inspector kind of thing.
Hey Steph, um, oh, sorry Steve. I, I just want to add one thing too. When it comes to staff reports, those are advisory. Um, so if staff is sending a, um, memo to a board saying, you know, something, it's not the, like, uh, completeness. That's another thing, right? Uh, staff reports come through and it's like, hey, you're missing, you know, all these things. Uh, the staff recommends it's complete or not. It, it's a recommendation. The board is the ultimate decision maker.
Right. Good point. Good reminder. Um. We want to keep a municipality from trying to prevent a project by creating regulations that make it more difficult. Any, any thoughts, our illustrious panel?
I think the Supreme Court is already. You want to have regulations that prevent any development in your community? Not a good idea.
Yeah. We, we, it says, we also want to keep a municipality from trying to prevent a project by creating regulations that make it more difficult. Yeah. I think that sooner or later you're going to get caught up with.
It's, it's a logical inconsistency there. It doesn't.
Um, how does a DRI affect, um, a town that's on the border of another state?
Whoa, that's a good one.
I, I was told years ago when I was director of a bi-state regional planning commission, that it only applied to New Hampshire communities.
Okay. So there is no obligation for New Hampshire to notice nor for Massachusetts to notice New Hampshire.
Uh, that's what I was told by Steve or someone else at any.
I, I agree Tara. I'm sure I'm, I said it correctly then and I affirm it now.
Yep.
I would, I would like to add, it's a good idea to do so because the, uh, regional impact works two ways.
Right. There, there is, you know, there's, there's things that, you know, that we talk about too here around the office and then some of the advice that we give out here is that, you know, the boards should get along. Neighboring communities should, should get along. Um, you know, if people, you know, talk, word gets around. So if you're, if you're keeping track of other communities' agendas, which are all online, um, certainly a phone call and, and some discussions and cooperation can go a long way. So that's good to keep, good to keep in mind.
Yes, that's a good, uh, neighboring communities will always be your neighboring community.
Yeah. That's right. You can't change your neighbors, right? Can't change your neighboring communities. Um, um, RSA six seventy-six, twelve, six, acceptance vesting. What if the application was not accepted? So I'm thinking, six seventy-six, twelve is, isn't that substantial and completional development, Steve?
No, six seventy-six, twelve, six is the statute that says a project is exempt from subsequent zoning and planning regulatory changes once it's a completed application. So if it's not accepted as a completed application, it doesn't get that protection from changes in regulations.
Right.
So just to think of it this way, you've got this thing called what I call acceptance vesting. What it does is it keeps the rules in effect at the time the plan is accepted as a completed application. The same rules will apply to that plan right through the approval process, even if the town subsequently engages in changes in zoning or subdivision regulations or site plan regulations. It just keeps the rules the same, you know, as fairness to the applicant. Once the plan is approved, then you've thrown into RSA six seventy-four thirty-nine. And that means if you're an approved plan, you've got to start work within 24 months. And if you start work consistently with the approval of the planning board within 24 months, you're still maintain your vesting from changes in zoning and planning regulations. And then you have five years to get substantially complete. And once you substantially complete, you're golden, except for increases or changes in impact fees.
Correct. So does DRI apply when we suspect contamination of the Lamprey River? Do we just notice our contiguous communities or everyone downriver to Great Bay? I mean, DRI is for a new application coming in. So I don't, it's, I don't know, contamination of the Lamprey River from a new application?
The, the applicant, the application, I mean, the, the statute doesn't reference contiguous. It says those communities will be impacted.
Right.
So that's, I mean, that's a really good question, you know, is there an argument that, um, let's a, a project, um, is one of regional impact that's expected to have an impact on a neighboring community? It doesn't refer to you have to be contiguous. So theoretically, I suppose, if for a particular land use project. Well, first of all, I guess I would say, the land use project is gonna have an immediate pollution impact on the Lamprey River. There are other rules that come into play here. It's the Clean Water Act and other statutes that you may not get that plan approved. But let's assume someone is gonna make the argument uh, that a new golf course is gonna have terrible phosphate runoff and cause harm to the Lamprey River. Okay, maybe that has to, you know, be giving notice to all of those who will butt the Lamprey River could suffer harm from phosphate pollution. But I, you know, I suppose that's possible.
Right. Uh, keeping on a DRI theme here, do we have to notice for every aspect of a DRI determination? For example, traffic is impacted, so the remainder of DRI categories do not need to be determined? Or do all of them need to be addressed? Well, I think, you know, the, the statute can spells out what could trigger and then they've seen regulations that the planning board can also put their two cents in as to what they feel as though would trigger. So if that was, you know, five hundred houses in a year, that would trigger a DRI. So along that review process of the application, I would assume that traffic would come into play with that. And, and I think they have to make that clear in their determination that they have to give the reason why they're doing the, the determination. Correct, Matt? You know, kind of, they have to say, this is why we're doing this because A, B, C, D, F, G.
Yeah, and, and I'm actually, I just grabbed the statute, I got it on my other screen here, and here's what it says, right? Uh, it basically says, because of factors such as, but not limited to the following. Number one, and it's got one, two, three, four, five, six listed. Number one is the size and number of dwelling units compared with the existing housing stock. So that would be from a regional standpoint, right? Number two, proximity to the borders of a neighboring community. Number three, transportation networks. Number four, anticipated emissions such as light noise, smoke odors, or part, part, particle, particles. Um, five, uh, proximity to aquifers such as surface waters which transcend municipal boundaries. And six, shared facilities. So what could some examples of these be? So number one, you could say somebody's coming in, you've got a, a rural part of the state. You've got a corner where there's three towns, they, you know, their, their, their corners all match up or whatever. And somebody's coming in with two hundred and fifty units in one of those towns. That could be a significant impact on that housing stock one. Uh, number two, proximity to the borders, right? Literally, somebody's coming in with a subdivision on the border. And just think about the things that could spin off from there. Maybe there's a driveway from one town into the other town to the access to the site. Um, for those of us in Merrimack County, we have at our registry, the uh, registry likes to have um, the abutting town sign on the, on the plan, saying there's no subdivision or development in this town, right? So that could be one. Um, transportation networks, you've got a so you've got a, a, you know, a Route one fourteen or something like that where it crosses and you've got a large development coming in and it's gonna, you know, spike the uh, traffic counts across the border. Um, anticipated noise and emissions, think in that, in that one, you could think, you know, a large industrial facility coming in. That's got a large smokestack. We touched on the Lamprey River. Um, I, I could see that one falling under that. And the last, shared schools, facilities. But that last one could also be your, um, your emergency mutual aid stuff, right? Like you could have a scenario where you're like, hey, you know, the fire department um, is concerned about a development in that abutting town because of mutual aid, right? That's not one you may think of, but it could fall under that. And again, it says limited, um, factors such as, but not limited to.
Right.
Yeah, I, I, I'd like to jump in here if I could. Um, the, the way it typically plays out, it doesn't matter if you, you miss a criteria or not because once you determine it's gonna have a, say, traffic impact, you send a notice the, the, the neighboring town. And it's up to them to, uh, respond, you know, they'll decide which, which, what respect it might impact on the, um. So that's not a burden for the, the planning board in the, um, the, you know, where the, the project is gonna be proposed. It's, it's up to the neighboring town to, to assess it and figure out how they'll be impacted. And they can come join the conversation. And, you know, typically they'll come in and they'll, they'll talk about impacts that, that we didn't even think of.
Right. Good point, Tom.
Two, two things, um, I think, to be clear for Jim, um, when you do the DRI notice, you don't have to have already determined what the impacts are. You're looking, you're looking at that list that Matt read in terms of the size of the project. And you also have more detailed, um, guidelines developed by each regional planning commission as required by the law that can help. But you, there's no requirement to our, our, you, you couldn't have identified the impacts because you have to send that notice out as soon as you determine that it might have a regional impact.
Right, right. Um, again, and going through these questions, you know, just in the essence of time, if we haven't, anyone who, you know, are attendees, if we haven't answered it or you're still looking for clarification, um, please, you know, reach out to any of our speakers or myself and we'll get, you know, we'll clear up our answers for you as best we can. There's some quick ones here. Um, should rules of procedure be posted on a town's website? Um, I would say yes, they, they should. Here's one, if recusal, excuse me, if recusal results in a loss of quorum, are further actions invalid?
The meeting is done.
Right. If you don't have a quorum, you can't make a decision. Um, what impact on decisions result from a failure to follow rules of procedure? Steve, I'm looking at you.
Yeah, okay, so I can, I can tell you, I can tell you what the statute says, and I just quoted it a little while ago.
Okay, good.
This is RSA six seventy-six colon four, and this is what it says. Procedural requirements specified in this section, that's a six seventy-six colon four, and certainly including your rules of procedure, are intended to provide fair and reasonable treatment for all parties and persons. The planning board's procedures shall not be subject to strict scrutiny for technical compliance. Procedural defects, whatever they may be, shall result in reversal of planning board actions by judicial action only when such defects create serious impairment of opportunity for notice of participation. So if you made a minor clerical error, that's not gonna reverse your decision. However, if you really do impair the ability of an abutter to participate, that might create circumstances that would warrant, um, reversal for this impairment of the ability to participate.
Perfect. Are planning board supporting documents for an application considered public record? Should they be posted prior to hearings and meetings? Um, yes, anything that is submitted to the town for a planning board review or submitted to the municipality is public record. If it's part of the application packet, if it's a letter from an abutter that gets included into that packet and you post your packets online, then yes. Anything that's submitted across the counter of a, of a municipal building is public record, right, Steve?
Yes. Any, any record created or accepted or obtained by a governmental agency or a, a, a quorum of a public body is a, is a public record.
Yep. Uh, Steve, this question was, I think, in relation to the very interesting Hanover case with the, um, the expert testimony where the board, I think, I think this is what it's related to because the question is um, we can ignore contradicted expert testimony? Um, what would be considered the bar to adequately explain that? And I think that was probably answered or can be answered in your review of the Hanover case with the, with the butters and the, the, um, was it the, the lighting study? There was something that the board reviewed?
So, um, you really, if, if you're gonna, if you're going to use your personal views of whether or not a plan should be approved or disapproved, you're gonna have to some foundation to do that if there is uncontradicted uh, expert testimony that doesn't, that, that's not, your point of view is not supported by some other report that suggests the expert that's submitted by the applicant is incorrect. And I think I cited to the case, I think it was the town of Milton, where the ZBA had articulable bases to argue a particular traffic report was simply wrong. Because this was a, a campground that was trying to expand and the issue was whether or not the, the one road into the campground, when they added three hundred new campground camping sites, would overwhelm the trap, the ability of that road to handle that traffic. And, and the critical failure on the part of the applicant was to have the traffic engineer do the traffic study in May. When in fact, the traffic was a problem, not in May, it was in July and August. And that allowed the planning board to say, this traffic report is not sound. So you could reject a, an expert report if you have a basis to do that. But it can't be based upon your own personal opinion. So, uh, you know, in the, the Hanover case, the, the city, the, uh, Dartmouth actually hired an expert who did a shadow study. When we put up this building, how will that building affect the sunlight to the neighboring, uh, homes? And it showed that there was negligible or no impact. And the planning board just said, well, we don't care, we still think it's a pig and a poke or a skunk in the garden party. And that was just pure personal opinion. And that was not a basis upon which the, 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 the planning board could make a sound decision.
And I think that hopefully, uh, if John Wengler is still on the line, his, his question was, what RSA gives the planning board authority over impact of shadows? Um, and I think that would, maybe that's third-party review, but I hopefully that's, you know, we, you agree, Steve? Impact over shadows, have an expert come in to, uh, to talk about shadows?
I think, I, I don't, I'm not gonna tell planning board, you should go running around looking for people to do shadow studies. But if you need to find an expert who does shadow studies, I think you contact Dartmouth College to see who they used.
Yeah.
And you may just go look at the file and figure out who they used.
Right. And well, yes, the RSA is, would, would fall under a third-party review.
Yes, exactly.
Uh, there is a real possibility we will only seat six members based on our current rules. How do we break a tie? Is that just for applications or does that apply to other business of the planning board like meeting dates and procedural, or procedural votes? Uh, one way to break a tie is to, you know, um, rephrase the motion, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, look, you, hypothetically, I suppose you've got a problem when you've got an even number of, of members on a planning board, it's just a problem because you have the potential for a tie vote. Um, so I, I suppose one way you could do it is, um, maybe you have a rule where the chair only votes when there's a tie. And, and, and then the chair would vote, but I suppose you don't know that's gonna occur because if the chair on, on a board of six, then you have five, you shouldn't have in a tie. So I, I think, you know, if you have a tie, you have to amongst your fellow board members say, look, we've gotta make a decision. So somebody has got to yield their point of view, which may require the person who made the motion that ended up with a tie tweaking it a little bit to satisfy somebody to move over to the side, either say yea or nay. Uh, it's just, you're working with your fellow board members to reach some kind of decision that i- is based on the record.
I guess I'd like to add that the, uh, statute allows the, um, planning board to have up to five alternates, and that's what they're for, is they're, they're reinforcements in case you do have a um, planning board that's, you know, doesn't have enough people in it.
Yeah, from, from the earlier back and forth, they, they were gonna be missing their uh, select board ex officio, and there is no alternate for that. And I actually have that situation right now in, in one of my towns.
Um, I, I believe it's a provision, Tara, for, um, the select board to have a designated alternate.
Yes, what we're talking about is a situation where the select board doesn't have an alternate.
Right. Um, when the state approves a wetland building permit or the state for, or a septic, excuse me, so when the state approves a wetland building permit for septic, can the town disapprove?
Well, okay, that, there's a key case on that, Durant versus Town of Dunbarthen. And in Durant versus Town of Dunbarthen, the applicant had gotten subsurface approval for a septic system. But then Dunbarthen had a more stringent set of standards uh, for a septic system, the key thing is you have to have a certain amount of, um, soil separating the bottom of the septic system from the water table. Dunbarthen had a higher standard. Dunbarthen said you have to have, I can't remember, four feet of separation from the bottom of the septic system to the water table. Um, and that was deemed to be within the town's authority to have that higher standard for the septic separation. So I don't know about wetlands, but we're talking about subsurface approval. Towns can have more stringent health regulations on the design and the percolation rate of the receiving soil for a septic system. So even if subsurface approves, it may be the town through its health regulations has a higher standard, and that's permissible.
Okay. Is it proper for the planning board to frequently grant waivers, as many as four to six per application? Doesn't this ob- obviate the zoning ordinance and rules? I mean, I guess what it kind of, when I see that, I guess a red flag that goes up for me would be that maybe there's something wrong with your regulations. I kind of spoke a little bit about that, um, in my session, that if you're, if, that if you're, if a a planning board or a zoning board, zoning board is getting too many variances for one particular section of the ordinance, then maybe that's a red flag to look at that section of the ordinance, maybe it needs to be reworded, maybe it's outdated. Uh, but if there's a particular section or, or language of your ordinances, and so we know, we learned from this morning that for waiver requests are the relief for the planning board regulations. And if you're getting four to six waivers maybe for the same si- situation or several of those things, then maybe you need to look at, um, you need, need to look at updating your regulations. Um, you know, and the applicant has to prove, remember, we talked about it this morning. In order to, uh, to, for the planning board to grant a waiver, they shouldn't be handing them out like lollipops, right? Um, you need to make sure that you're still gonna have enough information to make an informed decision. The applicant has to show a hardship. And I would add that I would not take finances into a consideration as for something to be causing a hardship similar to a variance, just because it's gonna cost more or it's gonna, you know, affect me more, I'm not gonna make as much money. I don't really, me, I, I don't consider that, you know, basis for a waiver. You have your regulations, um, they have to prove, you know, have a hardship as to why you should waive those regulations for them in particular. And if the planning board is, is repeatedly giving out waivers for everything or there's a particular section, um, then you need to start thinking about, you know, your regulations as a whole and your actions of a planning board as a whole. Um, because four to six waivers, um, if it's the same thing over and over again, then you kind of have your answer. But if it's all across the board and they keep granting waivers, you know, I would, I would question that as well. And I don't, I don't know what the rest of the, of the, the panel would think about, you know, repeated waivers.
When, over the years, I was seeing the same application requirements waived for, I know it's a little bit different part of the question, but for minor site plans. And most of the towns I work with don't have enough staff to do a TRC. So I started building a section into the applications that states what's exempt and what can be subject to a minor site plan review process, which is gonna be the one where you can do a sketch rather than have an engineer or surveyor. Which is, you know, it's gonna be the typical thing that would go to a TRC in a bigger community. So, so I'm with you, Stephanie, of, if something's waived all the time, rewrite the regulations.
Yep. Yeah, and, and again, and if it's in a, you know, hopefully through these trainings and, and planning boards with their experience, with new, new members, with older members that have been on for a while, um, you know, hopefully these trainings, you know, they can give you the empowerment to be able to say to an applicant, no, these are our regulations, um, you know, you haven't proven a hardship. Um, we're gonna deny your waiver request, this is why we're denying it, this is the information we need. Like Steve spoke about this morning, um, that boards have a, have a duty and an obligation to work with applicants. There needs to be this, this back and forth is okay between board members and applicants. Instead of applicants coming in and running the show, or on the other side of that, planning board's being too heavy-handed. So if there's an issue with a lot of waivers being requested, then I, you know, maybe it's, it, you know, the, the board should kind of have a conversation about that as well.
I, I think you mentioned this earlier in your session too, Stephanie, in terms of, um, the same with zoning variances. If, if a variance is being granted for a section of the zoning all the time, that tells you that's one of the first things you should talk about when you're doing them.
Right. Um, and speaking of variances, so this will get some good discussion. Should an applicant come to the planning board first for a waiver or ZBA for variance? So, so I like to say that the, the variance is your permission slip, right? You've gone to the ZBA, you've gotten your permission slip, and you still need site plan review. So now that you've gotten your permission slip to, yes, I can break the rules from the, from the, from the zoning board. I go to the planning board and I have proof that I can break the rules, and now I can have my site plan approved. If I do that in the reverse way, and I go to the planning board and I get site plan approval, and the planning board conditionally approves it on me getting a variance, which is fine, they can do that. But then I turn around and go to the ZBA, and the ZBA denies my variance. So now I have a site plan approval that's kind of invalid, correct, Steve? I mean, I don't, I can't meet all the conditions of approval, I don't have a variance. So I've kind of put the, I've, I've put the cart in front of the horse. So I'm a little bit more old school, and I would always say, get your variance, get your permission slip first and go to the planning board and that you have your zoning compliance, or you have your zoning variance and move forward from there. So I don't know.
The bar is a lot lower in terms of application materials, so I, I do the same.
Yeah, it's, it's less expensive to do your variance first, too. I was gonna say that, it's a good, great point.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Yep.
Yeah, and the other thing, of course, the planning board cannot approve a plan, subdivision or site plan that does not conform to the zoning ordinance. So the only thing the planning court could give is conditional approval.
Right.
One thing I would say, though, there's a provision of 676 colon four that's important to understand. Says an application shall not be considered incomplete solely because it is dependent upon the submission of an application to or issuance of permits or approvals from other state or federal government bodies. So you can't say, we're not gonna accept your completed application, your application is complete because you don't have your wetlands permit, or you don't have your alteration of terrain permit. But it doesn't refer to the zoning ordinance or to a local zoning decision by the ZBA. So just be careful.
Right.
You know, by your plan acceptance, you can't say, we're not gonna accept your plan because you don't have your AOT permit, alteration of terrain, because that would be contrary to 676 colon four.
Right. How do you handle an application that hasn't requested a waiver for something they should have? And the application has been accepted? And the need for a waiver arises in the process of reviewing the application in a public hearing?
It, it happens all the time. I mean, even though a waiver or request should be part of the application and the regulations all say that and say that it should be specified and, and the rationale provided, it happens all the time. And the reasons need to be documented in the minutes and the waiver documented in the notice of decision. There should be a section for waivers in the notice of decision.
Yeah, I would, would go as far as, you know, waivers are included, again, right, included in the notice of decision, and they're also indicated as a note on the plan that a waiver was granted for, for this, because it's included as notice of the decision, but it's great for record keeping.
So a lot of, I mean, site plans aren't being recorded, so by getting it in the notice, you get it recorded.
Uh, just to be clear, someone wants to confirm, 67421 does allow the planning board to approve variances from certain zoning ordinances as allowed by town vote, right?
I think, I think that's that confusion between variances and waivers and flexibility. You know, variance is really strictly the ZBA's purview, and there's a statute with the criteria.
Right.
Um, I'm wondering if that person meant, um, you know, that an innovative zoning statute can give the planning board the authority to, to flex some things.
Right, like, you know, right, your CUPs or something like that through innovative land use controls. So Steve, did you pull up the ordinance, the RSA, is that what you looked at?
I, I've, I've always got the ordinance in front of me. Uh, so, um, I guess I would say, um, under condition, uh, condition, let's assume the planning board has given the authority under a conditional use permitting process, and it's adopted as innovative land use control, where the planning board can modify certain elements of the zoning requirements. So the planning board can say, we'll allow you to have a smaller lot size for a project that might be an incentive to workforce housing, so long as it met public health and safety and welfare concerns for anti-septic consumers. So yes, the planning board can be given the authority to modify zoning requirements. Sort of like, like I said before, similar to what typically the ZBA would do to grant a special exception. Normally, you can't have a home occupation, but you can have a home occupation if you meet certain requirements. A lot of times it's done by special exception, same concept is what is employed when the planning board grants a conditional use permit. And it may have been given the authority to make those modifications to ordinary zoning requirements in order to achieve certain uses that are allowed under the CUP process.
Right. Um, looks like this would probably be the last question, and again, what I will do is go through chats. Um, and what I'll do is I will, um, answer the, the remaining questions that we received in the chat or send them out to the panel. Um, we can all kind of take a stab at them, and what we'll do is, uh, we'll post them on our website. And so just kind of keep checking back with us, we're in transition for a new website. Um, things could get lost in translation with that. So, uh, just want to make sure to let everyone know that we, that we, we, we've got more questions than we, than we always seem to do, and but we will address them, we will answer them, I will put them into a document, I can't promise you it'll be, you know, you know, Monday. Um, but we will get that on the website and we'll send, possibly we could send out an email notification that for anyone who's attended and looking for the, the, um, answers to those questions. So we'll take, uh, one more here. Um, does addressing waivers before the acceptance of an application vest the project? Um, I think, you know, it's kind of what I spoke about in, in my session a, a lot was that, you know, which do you do first? Grant waivers or accept the application as complete? And so it's, you know, and once an application is accepted, it has been heard and accepted as complete, that's when the, you know, the vesting has been used a lot today. Um, but you shouldn't be, um, you should be gr- addressing waivers, um, you know, before you accept as complete, because if you accept as complete and then, um, you need a waiver and the applicant can't provide the information, um, then you've got to continue that application and you've lost 30 days. So you're losing half of your 65-day time clock, or you're losing two weeks of your 65-day, uh, time clock review because you've accepted it as complete, but you didn't grant the waiver. And remember, granting, um, you know, um, accepting as complete is all of the information needed to make an informed decision. And if you don't have all the information to make an informed decision, then you, you shouldn't be accepting this complete nor granting waivers, if that's kind of how things, so interesting to see what the panel would say.
Well, my concern is this. If you're granting a waiver before the planning board has jurisdiction over the plan, what gives you the right to in fact do that? The plan is not before you legally. And it can't be before you legally where you can modify your rules until you've accepted as complete. So I, I'm not, I don't, I don't think it's a good idea to grant waivers um, until there's plan acceptance, but you can then address waivers immediately after you have accepted the plan as complete. It may be the first order of business in the public hearing process. Uh, I just, I'm suspicious of a waiver granting when the, technically, the board doesn't have jurisdiction over the plan, so, sorry, but that's kind of how I look at that.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it's a good point, and, you know, but again, if you're one of those communities that, you know, accepts as complete or doesn't accept as complete, and then schedules a public hearing for, you know, another 30 days, you know, my concern is that you've accepted as complete and you're burning through your, your time to review period when, while you're waiting for, for a waiver, but still doesn't give you the information you need to accept to, you know, to review the application, or does it give you all the information that you need?
Yeah, but I think the better practice is just go right into the first public hearing at the moment you've done plan acceptance. So you schedule it for plan acceptance and possible public hearing, so you're not gonna waste that time. It's gonna, you're gonna start the public hearing process immediately after someone's voted, the board has voted to accept it as complete.
Uh, Tara, Tom?
I, I'm not gonna schedule a public hearing unless I already know it's complete, and I'm gonna make that recommendation to the board. I, I hate to see board schedule them for the same night unless it's a really minor project. Because I think that's when they get kind of pushed into accepting it as complete when it's not. And, and end up like, like you said, Stephanie, burning up the car.
Matt or Tom, what are your thoughts about acceptance and waivers?
Oh, it's, it's been my practice to, uh, to encourage them after acceptance, encourage the waivers after acceptance is.
Yeah, I mean, I think, um, that makes sense to me, I mean, I, but, you know, you want to make sure that if there is a waiver, um, and it's something you need, that you still are able to get that thing, right? Like, say, a study or whatever, um, you know, that you've got, it all does come down to making sure you've got enough information to have an informed decision.
And I think part of the answer has to be, it depends whether he was asking about waivers of application requirements or waivers of substantive requirements, but the answer either way is no, it doesn't vest the project.
Right.
If you do it in the wrong order.
Right, right. Okay, well, again, thank you very much, everyone, for your attendance, and thank you again for our speakers. We, we can't have our conference without you, so we appreciate your time and your, your expertise. Um, again, I will go through the questions and put them into, um, some type of, of, of document on our website so people can review them. Um, and again, thank you very much for attending, we will get to your questions, um, and we'll probably, what I'll do is see if we can send out an email or put something in, um, in, um, planning link or planning news that the conference has been finalized, and that'll be when we have questions up. So, thank you very much, everyone, again, for your attendance and, uh, your participation, our speakers.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day, everyone.
See you guys. Bye.